Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's what I was thinking last night in the shower, that we need to, we need to get her an airplane. I think I'll call Corbin, my, because his is a 120 Cessna, and that's a tail dragger. And, okay, I'm filming, I should maybe not be talking about her. Anyway, she sat in, she, she didn't sit in my airplane, but she got up and looked. But she sat in Terry Gill's. And she li-
She's in a jet?
No, it's a Aron- oh, Aaron Champ, it's a Champ. But it's a tail dragger.
Yeah.
And I said, you know, I said, you could learn how to fly one of these things. And so I kinda explained to her how you, you know, you hold the yoke down and get your speed up, and it brings the tail up, so that you can get off the ground. And, uh, she just, you know.
A friend of mine, who's actually an AP, he actually had his pilot's license before he had his.
Well, you can do that, yeah.
I thought you said that being-
Yeah. And hi- his dad, her dad, and this is, this is an example, her dad, uh, was complaining because they expected her to solo if she got a pilot's license before, uh, she was sixteen. And I said, yeah. He goes, how can she do that? I said, everybody has to solo, and you can get your license at sixteen. So she'll be going by herself, that's right. Everybody solo's.
It's better.
And he's just, I'm pretty sure he went back and looked all up, you know.
Which is the, is the, the big difference, but she had brought in fifteen, uh, head charge board. I mean, yeah.
Alright, so it's ten oh five, I'm calling you to order. Just going to be in the front lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is consent agenda. Is there any member that would like to pull any items to consent agenda? So I would interchange a motion to approve. My Scott Ayers?
Second.
My Gracey Martin, is there any discussion? I'm waiting. Hey Doc? No worries. We just have, we have a motion, second on the floor for the Senate agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close, same time? Motion carries. Uh, financial report, um, we sit at forty, uh, halfway through the year, or, again, halfway through May, we sit at forty-five point two two percent consumption, uh, revenue per year over a year. And, uh, I'll pass it off to Tim for the department.
Yeah, so, uh, the auditors department is at forty-two point five five percent year-to-date. No issues or concerns there. The commissioners are at fifty-nine point two two percent. Uh, I mentioned this last month, I'm gonna mention it again, I, it, it's really on me to get this figured out, but, um, the senior citizens line, oh sixty-eight, three thousand dot eight three. Uh, they're at three hundred and forty-four percent.
That is because there was an encumbrance.
Okay.
That came in, and then, um, and I think they, I, I really believe that's the reason.
So there, there was money, okay, well, we can look at it later, and, uh, there was money spent in May, and it was already way over the percentage budgeted, but an encumbrance exists. Uh, council's at fourteen point four eight percent, no concerns. The eleven seventy-two Lip P S A is at thirty-four point four four percent. Uh, there's been no change in the repairs and maintenance line that I brought concern about a couple, uh, a couple months ago. Uh, so good news there. Uh, the twelve twenty-two statewide nine-one-one is at fifty-eight point three two percent. Uh, the repairs and maintenance line on that continues to be at eighty-eight percent year-to-date. So we're just up against that forty thousand, uh, that we budgeted for the year, uh, at thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. That's all I got.
Um, my health department's running at three percent. The assessor is running at forty-six percent. Transfer station running at thirty percent. Carroll County running at thirty-five percent. The assessor's running twenty-six percent. Four H is running twenty-two. Swallowmont is running thirty-nine percent. So all my money, definitely.
I will beg your attention.
I don't have anything.
Everything, my departments are running normal. The only thing that could come up there is a possible whether repair, um, for an extra hundred and one thousand, otherwise, uh, they'd be, where they should be.
All of my departments are well under forty percent. I'm just telling everything, this is pretty, uh, long. How's my answer?
Uh, sheriff's budget, uh, sits at fifty-four point five five, you know, brought that up every, um, month. That's skewed because the entire pension fund is paid, uh, at the beginning of the year, so that's down. Uh, the only line that he has that's over budget, not over budget, but over annualized consumption would be autos. And we discussed that, still cycling through some budgetary issues. I mean, not budgetary, it's just some, some real world problems that they're having regarding maintenance on some of those old Chevy Impalas. So, uh, hopefully those will be cycled through soon, be able to weather that storm. Uh, nine-one-one, uh, sits at thirty-nine point three five. The tail at thirty-four point seven three. Uh, we discussed that before, you know, pipes, could there be an issue there? What we're gonna do? It's kinda hard to tell. Uh, I haven't seen a proposal from Toad, but it sounds like they're still working through the problems there with lateral lines. And then, uh, animal control sits at thirty-four point two seven, so it looks good there. Any other financial reporting? Alright, we'll move on to the auditor's report.
Um, I have asked Josh if there would be a way that we could change the time of the July fifteenth meeting to the afternoon. Um, I have a commitment in the morning. I do not have experience people coming in and doing this yet. We may report it, but I like to be involved in meetings, I like to know what's going on. So if you, I don't have, I plan to take that as a vacation day, but I am planning, I can be back in the afternoon. So I would really appreciate the time to change it.
What, what do you, or what, what, what time do you need?
Be safe when you want to, or even later, I don't care.
Two works good, two works good.
I mean, to, to allow you the vacation day, is there another day that would work if we just moved the meeting entirely?
I don't mean, I don't mean full day. I mean, I'm just, I'm fine with coming back.
Okay.
That's fair.
Uh, next, the week before, after that is spare weeks, that's even much, so.
Alright.
If possible, do Wednesday morning.
I'm gone, I'm young.
You're not a whole day out?
Yeah. Which is fine. That's a what is the, what state, or? Does it wanna stay on the, uh, five days?
This is a big body, I'm here too.
Yeah, Wednesday's fine.
Same as yours, normal?
Can I get a motion?
Second.
So your motion is to move it to the fourth, at ten?
Yes.
Motion by Paul Ryder, second by Ken Wright. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, close, same time?
Thank you very much. Um, settlement, I just want you to know that settlement has been, is being processed. Most, uh, they have this being ninety percent of it is done. Um, anything that's gotten their money, I believe it was on June seventh, I didn't check that day down, but, yeah, so it's, we're done. So, proud of that. Um, then, in your mailboxes, you have a, uh, notice of a state hall conference for council association. It's on June twenty-sixth in Plainfield. Just wanna make sure you guys all get that. And if you need to register, you can do so online, I believe, and you can use a credit card.
I would really like for a month to go, I have finals open, I can't be there, so, uh, if anybody can, can make that, it's, it's a really good meeting to be able to update us all on. I think Jackie, will it be on, on the AIC website, or, I mean, will you update any of that?
The information already, you can register from the AIC website. And, um, I will tell you the agenda, I'll be posting the new agenda later on this afternoon if it is finally finalized with the call letter from the State Board of Accounts. It's a call meeting, it really is a show meeting, everybody, uh, is supposed to go, but, uh, unfortunately, a lot of councils can't, um, because there's so many of you. But, um, it's at the Courtyard Marriott in Plainfield, so it's easy to get to, there's no expense in parking. Um, it is on Saturday from, I believe, nine to four, um, with lunch served in the middle. And they will be talking a lot about the ARCA funds.
Yeah.
There'll be a lot of discussion on the ARCA funds.
So, if anybody can make it, that'd be a really good, uh, representation there.
Jackie, do you know if the auditors associations wanna have something like this?
The auditors are being invited to the, this what, meeting also, yes.
Then we also have tax allocation letters for our, um, the, from the Carroll County Economic Development and, um, the Carroll County Redevelopment Commission, that their tax allocation areas for twenty twenty-one taxes take twenty twenty-two. But there are, they have determined that there's no, um, excess value, cess back in you that may be allotted to the overlapping taxing units in the matter prescribed in subset June. So, I'm just supposed to make sure this gets in the minutes, that's why I'm staking that. So, they file these every year, um, so.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Beth?
In essence, there's no overlap.
Oh, no overlap, that's right.
Thank you.
And I, do we do? I'll say next, um, just so.
The next item on the agenda is the resolution we're regarding our trans meetings and our, uh, council, uh, discuss. Or, you wanna just give it?
Sure, I'll, I'll give a, a brief, brief summary of what's going on here. So I don't know if you all have seen, um, the resolution, but essentially what I would simply term it as is a, a electronic meeting, a hybrid meeting resolution. So currently, we're under the governor's emergency order. Um, right now, we could have an electronic meeting where, where council members could vote, the public could appear. Um, the governor's been in the practice of extending, yes, extend those every thirty days. So at the end of the month, they'll extend it again. Um, some of the, some of the law attorneys are expiring as of July one, but, um, those may or may not be extended. Uh, he's in his second term, so he can kinda do whatever he wants, um, and not worry about how people really perceive that, I think. So, may or may not have that. Either way, well, if we do not have, um, provision where, where the emergency order's in place, then what we can do as a council is we can, we can pass this, is what I would term the hybrid meeting resolution. And my thought is, we could do it now, um, we don't need to. If there is a situation where we're either closed down again, or, uh, I think of the situation where Commissioner Brown was, was in the, the hospital last time, couldn't attend in person, uh, we could pass that. And then, if we have a quorum here, we could pass that. And then he could, or whoever it may be who's out and can call on the phone, they would then be able to participate and vote electronically. But, uh, it's my recommendation that we do not pass that until it's, until it's needed. It's not even-
Why is that?
Well, I, I think for a couple reasons. No reason if we don't, don't need it, would be one. And two, I think it encourages, um, people not to come to the meeting, because they can appear electronically, and it seems that you all wanna be here because you're here. Uh, so I, I don't think there's any reason until they'll necessitate.
Just seems, seems to me like, you know, if people are responsible enough to try to come to the meeting, they'd, they'd rather hang out.
Sure, so of course, it's the, you know, that's just my, my take on it, it's the will of the body. If, if you wanna, wanna pass it, that certainly is, is not true right now as well.
And, and we can, like, say someone that's, contracts COVID or has, is hospitalized, we can pass it at a meeting, like, first, first item action, and then, if that person that's out for the meeting, so, um, I, I don't think that there's a scenario where, you know.
You pass it on to the day.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We've done that, we've done that, right, yeah.
Yeah, I, there, there are some other complicating issues about it. Meeting attendance, and it, it, there's some, I, I think it's better just, uh, personally, to just pass it when it, if it becomes a thing.
I want to do it in May.
Yeah, and then also, yeah, he said encourage people to attend in person, I think that's what we all plan to do. Um, but, if anybody would like to make a motion, um, to, to take it on the floor, we can, but if not, we will ignore. Alright, we'll move on to the next item, and that is, Cameron needs to be, A P C to have a job.
Good morning.
Why, Cameron?
So I've sent you guys a few emails, and of course, one of them, a few of them. Kinda come full circle from where we were a couple years ago, a year or two ago. Um, I'm trying to get this office, or the area plan office, to where our staffing's correct, and obviously what the rest of the offices are doing as far as, uh, salary-wise, so. And if this, if this bothers any of you, please tell me, I'll, I'll get my signpost, it's in drag, it took this weekend, so a lot of people might stare. So we, uh, the area plan board passed the job description that, uh, we changed things around. We, we spoke with Irwin, kind of threw around everything that Gloria does in the office, uh, compared to what we do where it's part-time. And they come up with, uh, the position called office administrator. Uh, that passed for the A P C board, uh, they passed the Carroll County Commissioners. Uh, with that, they gave us a salary range of what we, what we could work with. I sent that to you guys in an email. You know, at the end of the day, um, there's a lot that goes on in that office, and we're not trying to ask for anything, we don't think it's, it's fair. Uh, if anything ever happened to me, that someone had to step in, do the day-to-day operations, um, until that position was filled. Uh, so we're not, we know we're not a first deputy elected position, we know that. Um, but our staff does the same duties if I'm not there, and she covers for, for things like that. So, there's only two of us. So that's where we got that, that's where we got to seventeen twenty-four, which is what our first deputy currently makes, we believe. Um, currently, we're at fourteen fifty-eight, I believe. Uh, we know it's a substantial hike, but we feel that it's, it's fair to where it should be, and what she does in the office every day. Uh, and I know it's budget time, and budget time is a seasonal thing for us, it's, this job is a year-round thing for us. It's every day, it's our salaries, it's our jobs, it's our, it's our livelihood. So, I'm coming to you today for two things. One, uh, for the new job description that I've worked with Vass Office, and thank her for her help with that. And Irwin and Associates, um, you know, we're just trying to get that position to where we're comfortable with it, and for what the work is done in that office, so, uh, that's, that's what I got for you guys. Gloria's here, if you guys have any questions for her. I have some stuff here, if you guys have any questions for me. If you guys all get my emails, I sent kind of a timeline, a synopsis and all that. You know, I don't wanna, I'm not trying to be that guy that just keeps kinda pester and poking. I know you guys have had some, some people come before you, and I'm not trying to be, um, that guy. But I, I feel that I wouldn't be doing my job as a supervisor if I didn't go to the back for my staff. Because she works hard, she does a good job, and that's part of being a good supervisor, is going to work with your staff. So, uh, if you did agree upon the, what we're requesting, I do ask that you consider something. Because, in a world that we live in today, you go right down the road, um, the road, and, and there's a lot of places hiring, and a lot of places hiring at higher salaries, and I know the county is different. I get it, I've done government work for a lot of years. But I wanna keep my staff, because she's a great staff member, and I value her. Um, and I, I know budgets are tricky, I do. So I'm just asking for your consideration on both. I know it's a tricky time of year, I do.
Cameron, was there, was there some things over in the office that, like, those schedules were not set that were yesterday, or are you collecting more?
Uh, we, uh, changed something, we added a split fee for a conversation to have with a few of you guys, why we didn't do it, and other counties do. So, that generates a little bit more money. Uh, we now currently split that with the auditors office to, uh, cover the G I S fees and all that, uh, that it's incorporated that. So, um-
Into the flat book?
Into the flat book, yeah, so, uh, they get half, we get half. And we're getting a lot of those actually, recently, but-
How much of that increase in, in kind of that, do you possibly?
You, you can't really give a number, because we don't know how many are gonna come in all year. I think last year we had around fifty-some at the end of the year. So, I mean, it's just, one week, I just had two drop off this morning. I mean, we might get ten in a week, we might get zero, so, it, it's getting to be, a lot of people are selling their land, you might get that to be us. Uh, other than that, you know, our, our fees have been, uh, the, the schedule has been what it was when Doug was here, and changed some things, so. And I know we're on our own tax, or we're on our own, our own fund, we don't, I don't know when that's gonna change, or everything, or like, I think that was since two thousand sixteen, I believe. So, I know we have, we have money in our, um, we have the money in our account to cover, um, cover items, and I don't know that you believe that your board, it, it makes a decision when we get our own tax bracket and all that. So, like I said, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, I'm just trying to, to keep progress going in the area plan, because we're getting busier by the week. Just, just as every office at the courthouse is. Every, every office at the courthouse is bad, in my opinion. They're good workers, it's a tough job, so.
I'd make a motion to approve the job description.
A second.
Sorry. Uh, I have a motion by Ethan Brown, seconded by Paul Ryder, to approve the job description of office administrator. Is there any discussion?
Who's the current job title?
Minister of Assistant.
Does anybody look at those job descriptions, and put it up against each other?
That was my question, there's not a-
I believe the only thing they changed was the name, this last time.
For office administrator, pardon, I meant that was a huge-
The last thing that they changed, though, was, was office manager.
Yeah, it went to, it was assistant director, which a few of the board members, yeah. So, the, the job title is different, but, uh, what's all involved with the job description itself compared to what she currently does is, is a lot different, you guys should have gotten those, but-
They did, they got the one that he had, the president, for the commissioners.
I'll give it to her.
Yes, and they, they corrected. And he's talking about the tax rate, he does not have a tax rate. We have not given him a tax rate last year and this year.
He's longer shot.
I mean, I, I know, I, I remember last year.
I researched it, I think it was around two thousand sixteen. And that's, could be, less, could be more, but that's what Donnie and-
I was here when we took the zero, it was, it was, so.
Yeah, I think it's, it's something, yeah, seventeen, it's okay, eighteen, nineteen, or-
Yeah.
Does it not money increase, or?
It's up to you. I mean, you guys took it down to zero.
Either it only increases, or?
No, so, there's only so much rate can go around. So, say it's two percent total, so, area plant gets so much, health park gets so much. So if you increase area, area plant, that huge cash reserves, they've been, for whatever reason, given. There was more revenue coming in than was going out. The rates had remained above, the rate had been set above where revenue would come in, or the expenditures were budgeted for. So they were continuing to grow cash balances in that fund, and that's why it went to zero, to put and burn those cash reserves back down. So, at some point, that, that rate will have to come back, but if that rate goes up, something else comes down, because it's a fixed pot.
And I think of, one of the reasons why it was, all of, what you just said was because they, there wasn't a lot of staffing in area plan. There, there've been a lot of, uh, you know, Gloria was part-time, and at one time, she was the only person in the office. And there was, I think, there's been times where there was nobody. So, I mean, and there's been some transitions from Doug and, uh, from, I don't think I was, like, paid director, but, you know, Mark Smith and Kathy and all that. So there've been a lot of gaps, and that's what I'm trying to avoid now, is I wanna keep a consistent staffing in the office, keep us in there. So, that might be the, the reason why there was a lot of money coming in, but as far as salary-wise, there wasn't a full, full-time salary, I worked out too, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, it was, it was before my time, yeah, I mean, they had hundreds of thousands of dollars-
Sure.
Before I ever showed up on the scene, and so, you know, that's, that's why it went to zero, because if, I can't remember, it was like, five years or something worth it.
Correct.
Yeah, I can't, I don't believe that, yeah. But anyway, um, motion on the floor is to improve the job description. Um, I, there's, I, I struggle with these, because it's really hard to compare, it's like apples and oranges. But, from, from your perspective, what is the, the main difference, as far as the job description?
Everything that's involved with her position, as far as the phone calls, the, the legal things that we have to do for, uh, public notices going out for rezone variances, documentation for those, the, the call complaints, and then the call volume alone is, on any given day, fifty or more phone calls before noon. And then, yeah, so, just the, being in there full-time instead of part-time, it's, the, the workload is for both her and I, which is irrelevant for what I do. There's chief, it's just, there's a lot involved with, uh, Indiana code and stuff, of getting stuff to death, and getting stuff to the, to the, to the citizens alike. So there's, there's a lot involved with the replant, there's just-
So you're saying all of that she's doing now, she didn't do as administrative assistant?
No, she is, and she still does, yeah.
David, I, I think the question was, what is the difference, the material difference between office administrator and administrative assistant?
We added stuff that she's doing, we, this one here did not have everything in there. So all this-
They're, they're both full-time positions, so I mean, to suggest-
Right, we just changed the, we just changed the title on this one. This one, the staff voted on assistant director, and then they said no. So the, the job description's what we added to. And the administrative assistant, it was pretty, kinda like, uh, when Cassidy came from, he had said, it had a very bland description of files, paperwork, answers, the phone off. Whereas this one has kind of a script of everything that, that's involved with, with her position. Does that, does that answer the question a little better, or is that still?
I mean, your analogy, you're trying to say is that she did all these items before, she, you're just a lot easier now, and there's more coming in, and she-
She did them on a part-time basis, and now that we're full-time, that, I mean, yes. I mean, it all has to get done, you can't, you can't do a rezone or, or anything without the Indiana code.
So for added job responsibilities, that's not what got added, it's just-
It's part of, it wasn't, what, wasn't there before.
Correct, and we're fixing with this.
Yeah, we didn't add anything to her job responsibility, this wasn't in the language before, this has been-
And your office is just extremely busy, because of-
Yes, and she's done all this before. She did it before, when, when nobody was in there, Al had, and she was in there doing it by herself, and I, I'll be real honest with you, I, I don't know how she did it. So, yeah, the, the language was just not incorporated, that's why we did our due diligence and wrote down what, what we do on a day-to-day basis, so. And, and I invite you, you guys can step in the office anytime for a week or two and hang out with us, and, and we'll give you a phone, and-
So we're, we're voting on the job description, I think correctly, or is it not the increasing back?
So you're really, you're detailing what she did, so everything's in the job description, so that she is doing what she's supposed to be doing?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's-
But I will remind, you just said, the only thing that changed between the current job description that she's operating under, and the job description that is on the floor to be voted on, is the title. There's no material changes to, to duties or- There's no material changes to, to duties or performance, so she's.
Right. And we're not discussing salaries, so we're just, we're actually about to.
We sent all this to Irwin, that was Irwin's, that was what we're told to do, and we sent them what she does, and that's what they gave us. Okay, so that's what they, that's what we do as accounting, that's what they did, so, that's what they asked.
You wanted to write it and outline it.
We, well, I had Gloria.
Has been doing.
I had Gloria, what do you do for eight to five, everything, write it down. And then we gave it to that office and they gave it to Irwin and Irwin produced that, so that's what we were supposed to do at that point.
What you're looking at, there, there's been several of those, but none of them have been brought forward to you, nor the commissioners, they.
Until they were passed, yeah, so, correct.
Well, until his board passed them.
Yes.
Because there were several different versions of it. This is the final one.
This was the one the board and commissioners said okay, and then now it's, it's to you, so.
And Irwin. Irwin's, who, who, who?
Correct, yeah, the other one does.
He made the changes and then made it, he made the, um.
Recommendation.
Recommendation of not being even an office manager to be the office administrator.
So from your perspective, this encapsulates everything that she does now. We're not talking about scope of work change, it's just.
Correct.
Or just a, just an H R updating of the, the job description.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, is there any other discussion on the motion to approve the job description? All of them, they were aye?
Aye.
Aye, both saying aye? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Six to one.
I, I didn't hear you.
Six to one, yeah, aye, I thought it.
Aye, sorry, I didn't hear your aye, so.
I just raised my hand, that's my fault.
I'd like to make a motion to, to raise her salary or raise the office administrator's salary to fifteen fifty, starting in the next figure.
Second. On, on what basis?
Well, I, I.
My second too. So I have a motion by Paul Ryder, seconded by Ethan Brown, is that correct? To increase the pay rate to fifteen fifty, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead.
And, and I know there's, 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 uh, our, our meeting's coming up to discuss salaries, um, but, uh, I, I feel that based on the amount of volume of calls and the, and on the work that has to be done, that it would be in the county's best interest in maintaining employees. I think we as a council are looking at, that, you know, keeping, keeping things going in the courthouse here, um, and not necessarily wait for an exact day to change. The salaries, you know, be, just because that's how, how we've always done it. I mean, kind of, I feel personally, I like to look at the situation and make a decision based on the, you know, what's coming after, what, what's the right thing to do, kind of, that's, you know, bringing up.
So is there any other discussion?
I'm gonna stick with my evidence that I always say, I believe everybody's position is important and everyone is busy in the courthouse. And I really want to tear into salaries at a budget time. And once again, if we, if we do this one, I'm guaranteeing there's gonna be another little docket next month, come on, people coming in.
You're gonna say why I'm here already, I mean.
That's what I mean, every month, up until much of time, they're gonna come in, one and a, a dollar or two or whatever. And to me, everybody is busy, everybody does their work, and I really am wanting the council to begin to payroll and salaries. So everyone gets to benefit and a raise, so that's my, still, I'm not for it at this time, but I absolutely am, am, are for it for the upcoming payroll time.
I'm just gonna shoot from the hip, just for context, um, this was a part-time position approximately two years ago, um, so. Twenty or twenty-four hours, I'm sorry.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay, so I, I believe it was ten forty-five and, uh, twenty-five hours, assuming it was thirteen thousand five eighty-five. Cause the total compensation was no benefits, no pay time off, so, uh, that position now pays an excessive, just gonna shoot in the net here. Thirty thousand plus benefits plus pay time off, so in a two-year period, it's more than double, maybe close to triple, so, uh.
She did make fifteen dollars at, um, there at the end because of.
More than pay rate?
Getting the trend to know, I was gonna, was it Al?
But that was when we.
When she was by herself.
That we increased that, that for a temporary.
Right, till the end of the year, and then she was full-time, and then she went down in her hourly rate.
But she went up now.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just telling you so.
Yeah, but, but before the.
She doesn't accept.
What was the, what was the pay rate prior to that increase to fifteen dollars that we did become the, when the previous director left?
Does that matter at all that she doesn't accept our terms?
I don't know.
No, I mean.
Why before fifteen? Ten forty-five, yes.
Correct. So, I mean, if you take, even if you take anything else, I mean, it went, it went from ten thousand five hundred-ish working twenty-five hour, or thirteen, well, let's just call it thirteen-five, to more than double.
My whole goal was to get it full-time, to get us back to where we, where Carroll County Airplane's never been, never had a full-time.
Right, and I, I, and I. I was saying.
Ops change, Carroll County is changing, um, we're building left and right, we're, we're growing, so that entails that his department is going to be busier. I mean, I don't foresee that department ever being able to run it on a person, I mean, that's kind of his goal, is that we wanna get, and if you're, I mean, I don't think Carroll County's gonna stop growing. And so it's, it's not the same it was three years ago, though, you, so you can't judge a department on three years ago.
Same as it was in twenty twenty, at this point.
Well, I'm trying to rationalize why it's a mid-year change. Excited as well.
Oh, I thought you were going back to what.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, it's, it, it, the pay has increased more than doubled over the last two years. And then what necessitates a mid-year change beyond that?
Your answer that, before the, before the, but, yeah, Doc.
I think Tracy hit it right on the head. I think the council is united in that we really want to adjust, look at salaries, and I think we need to do it. But, let's start first with the young lady. I'm not saying the young lady doesn't deserve it, cause I'm sure she does, but, but fifty other people.
I understand, and like I said, that's a seasonal thing for the council's budgets, we get them in July and we work on them close to December. For us, we're in there every, every day of the year, or, you know, five days a week, so, you know, at, at the end of the day, I, I can get it in budget time. And the reason why I didn't bring it prior to this was because I was told to do, I, I, I'm, this paper right here, I've done what I, what I've been told to do. I've done my homework, I went to Irwin, I've done my due diligence for my staff, you know, and I've done my work to get her, uh, and make her a, um, a better salary like the, the offices did two months ago to come in here, so I don't, you know, I, I'm just trying to make things consistent and stay where we are moving forward if we're making progress. So that's why we're here in, in June, because it had to get passed by the commissioners, had to get passed by the board, and there's some things that we wanted to tweak to make sure before I come to you guys. I didn't have a scattered plan, so that we have them down, here we are, so that, that answered your question.
I, I think it's good management to get that off, that, um, job description ironed out, garbage. So, um, the motion on the floor right now is, is just about the pay rate, so is there any further discussion about changing pay rate to fifteen fifty? All right, I'll call for vote, all those in favor, aye? Aye, two ayes. I'll propose, same sign? Aye. Motion fails, two aye.
Thank you, Cameron.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, guys. Okay, we have a, next item on the agenda is the Riverboat, uh, funding for the building Deer Creek drain. Don, you got here.
He asked if he can be here and if we can. He said he thought it gave you all the information.
Yeah, I, I. Does anybody need to hear from Don?
No.
I think you, you explained everything last time. Uh, and just for a recap, basically, this is, um, to fix a drain that is the county's property, uh, over at Deer Creek Park. Or, well, not to fix the drain, but to clear the trees that are obstructing the drain.
As the property owner.
As the property, yes, so, uh.
Did make a motion to pass.
Did we only advertise this out of Riverboat, or did we advertise it to different places?
The last time we did it out of the drains, and, um, I was at, from Drainage Board, and then you asked me to do it from Riverboat.
Okay.
Because it wasn't getting in.
Well, there's no drain, but the drainage, yeah, it'd be more or less county general. Yeah, it would affect.
We're just giving complexity.
It'll start to change, collecting drainage next year.
All right, uh, is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to pass to a agreement.
You're approving funding, right?
Right.
Well, is that second?
That's second, is it?
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Propose, motion carries.
Three seconds, zero, right?
Seven. Um, we have three additionals to be advertised, is there any objection to advertising any of those additional? Which department is the first to have these?
And we recorders office.
So, uh, without objection, I'll advertise those.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I need to ask you something too about this.
Doc?
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I'm just throwing out, but, uh, boiler repair, I'm not against it, we gotta fix the boiler repair, like, but I think for a hundred thousand dollars, I think we're gonna take that to, I'd really give.
What, oh, and that's, why did I put Riverboat on there, I missed that.
Um, that's what I was gonna say, is the commissioners made the recommendation for Riverboat, but they do not, they're wanting it, they'll leave it up to you for where to take it from, but they recommended Riverboat. So if you wanna change that, I'm sure it's fine with them.
This is just advertising, not discussing that.
Right, but I need to know where to advertise it, so. Well, and so, that was just their recommendation, cause I said where and, I'm not sure, so.
Can we hear from Keith about the, what Doc brought up?
You should have a copy of the, um, in your, what I sent you, I sent that, okay?
I got it.
Got a copy of the boiler, what are your, in your transcripts?
I mean, does, does anybody have any opinion on that? Um, I mean, I, typically, I mean, I could see adjusting the nature for doing it out of Riverboat, but I, I think this would usually be done out of county general. Since it's, I mean, basically, it's just an ad, what, or can I add a K M cap, but.
Add a project or?
It's, it's, well, it's repair, isn't it? Is it a repair or replace?
It's repair, yeah, and then, and the estimate on here is a worst-case scenario estimate, um.
Just, just one second, uh, so, I mean.
I mean, that is, it's a repair.
Probably asset.
Yes. And we have them in here, like, you do the elevator repair out there, you've done, we'll do the other thing we took out there just recently.
Out there, yeah, out there.
I could, K M cap isn't there or one, so I'm.